This morning, y'all. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
March the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Regular meeting Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas. We can show we do have a forum established. Commissioner Carbousk, Commissioner Archer, Commissioner Whitmire here with us, President, Commissioner Wilson's with us on my way to Zoom. It, uh, we do have bids for the court. Twenty-sixth tomorrow, so twenty-seventh, yeah. My mother would be a hundred years old tomorrow. Dr. Oggy, can you believe that? Years old tomorrow. That, that's gotta make me at least thirty years younger. Or more. I'm gonna call it that way, anyway. If y'all would all stand and leave, if you'd lead us in the pledge this morning.
Please face the American flag. Please face the Texas flag.
What is the Texas flag?
If y'all would pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, this beautiful day. Lord, the, just the weather today is just beautiful, everything about it. The day that you've made for us to, to work and live together and do your work as best we can and, and bring glory to you. Lord, thank you for your son. We thank you for this season of Advent. Or we thank you for this holy week and this day that's coming. Well, from Friday to Sunday, and we know in our hearts what it means to each and every one that believe. Lord, again, please bless the ones that are in need, bless, bless the ones that are sick. Bless the ones that, that need your comfort, that need your guidance, your wisdom, your grace. Lord, we thank you for everything, for all your wonderful blessings. We thank you, and Lord, please forgive us where we fail you each and every day. And help us to be better, better people, better stewards, better for one another. We ask these in Jesus' most precious name. Amen. Well, a lot of things going on in Liberty County here. Y'all noticed somebody decided to be a woodpecker with a chisel. They started chiseling away at the rice dryer over Dayton. Buddy, what do you think about that one? Did you ever think that you'd see that happen?
Not aware of it.
All I can say is somebody said it's gonna take them four or five months to bring a little rice dryer down. I said, no, I'll take a bet on that. It might take four or five months to get all the steel out of it, but it's gonna take a whole lot. Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we've had to deal with railroads before, haven't we? We know who wins on railroad occasions. But anyway, that was, that was, uh, one of those tender moments when you see the first chip come out. And I'm gonna do my best if I can get Commissioner Wilson to pick me up a chunk of that concrete, I'm gonna save it. Go ahead and drive by and get one. Alrighty. Notices and proclamations. Well, we do have a proclamation this morning. Liberty County Child Welfare Board. Cindy, I know you're there. Come on, y'all come on up, please.
They're here with us today.
Is your rider here this morning? Oh, good seeing you, you bitch. This is my joy of life, motherfella. So all the time, I, I feel like I go. Yeah, there you go. Child abuse prevention proclamation. It is necessary to build a robust family well-being system that not only supports families when they're in a crisis, but is intentional in supporting families before they are in a crisis. In Texas, we believe that children thrive and save stable, nurturing families within their own communities. Through establishing partnerships with families that capitalize on the strengths of parents and their children, we can build strong, healthy families in resilient communities where children can thrive. Sadly, child maltreatment is still a significant public health issue. Communities that lack accessible supports and resources can experience increased risk factors that lead to child abuse neglect. Despite the complex factors that can lead to child maltreatment, it can be prevented. Each year, the month of April is dedicated to recognizing the critical work being done across our great state to support families before a crisis occurs and offer them accessible lifelines that mitigate the challenges they face. Child abuse prevention occurs every day through the diligent work, tireless advocacy, and simple acts of kindness undertaken by Texas families, friends, neighbors, houses of faith, advocacy groups, nonprofit organizations, schools, healthcare providers, social workers, and government agencies to support children and families in every community across the Gulf Star State. Child abuse prevention cannot be tasked to one community agents or system. Behind many families that succeeded on their own is a strong community that provided a way for the family to meet their needs. All Texans must work together to strengthen our communities and build localized supports that are accessible, contribute to the well-being of the entire community, keep children and families safe and together. I encourage all Texans to learn more about the many aspects of our communities, working hard to create positive, healthy environments for the future leaders of our great nation. Together, we can create a brighter future for children, families, and communities in Texas, and ensure future leaders have the support they need to thrive and reach their potential. Now therefore be resolved by Jane I County Judge and Commissioners Court of Liberty County, Texas, along with Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, to hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-four to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Texas. It urged the appropriate recognition whereof. Signed, twenty-sixth of March. Uh, Commissioners toward myself.
And there's a Mary Terrence Children's sign. At the front, and don't do that by ankle.
Eddie, I didn't notice any more notices at all. Alright, good deal. Public comment. Anyone here today has any public comment? Anybody sign up? So we'll just move on. Uh, declare conflicts of interest. Uh, David, I think you had fifteen and sixteen, please, you had that noted. Consent agenda. We have a few items on there if you want to review. And I hope you've had the opportunity. Do you have any questions about the consent agenda? And if so, do we need to move any of the items to the regular agenda?
I have an add-on, gentlemen.
Okay.
Okay, we have a payoff to, um, Correctional Officer Rhonda Gordon, the jail, uh, for comp and vacation time, a total of three thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars and nine and a half cents.
How much, Miss Kim?
Three thousand five fifty-seven ninety-five.
Thank you.
And then we have another payoff to Vicki Gardner, Constable Precinct Five's office. So longevity pay only two hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay.
Anything else?
Angela, you have any add-ons today? We're good. Thank you.
I'm sure the consent agenda would have had on the camera.
Alright, got a motion. Greg, second from Bruce. To approve with the additions, as noted, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, thank you. That motion passes. By the way, y'all didn't know this, but, uh, Mr. Gott is now a grandfather. Boy, Leon, we're gonna have some fun with this.
I already started.
Sheriff, we're gonna have to explain to him, his life just changed forever.
Exactly right.
I mean, all those numbers he's been crunching all these years, he better start crunching them better. Anyway, congratulations to Dwayne and to the, the family, and what I understand, the baby's doing great. Mama, mama is, and daddy is, he's gonna be doing great, believe me. Okay, move on to the regular agenda, number eight point one from, uh, Mr. Edgar Mueller, Fire Marshal. Uh, it's our standard, uh, well, authorization time, whatever the court's pleasure. Consider and approve order authorizing fireworks sales for San Sino Day, beginning April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four through midnight, April the twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. And our normal procedure is to consider, uh, sticks and fins. I believe we all know what that is. Approved without the, uh, sticks. Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-two from Mr. Hunter, Constable in Precinct Five. Consider and approve a twenty-five-hundred-dollar donation for Constable Precinct Five K-9, K-9 Training from Papa Road Incorporated. Got a motion to approve? Motion from Leon, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-three from Lime Barters. Our tax attorneys, consider and approve the following private resale bids on delinquent tax properties. Uh, M. Childress, property ID number five-seven-five-five-two for twenty-three seventy-seven. Uh, two G floors, property ID eleven-two-forty for twenty-two thousand. That ought to be interesting. Number three, M. Childress, property ID five-seven-five-five-three for thirty-seven fifty-eight. And M. Littland on number four, property ID fourteen fifty-six fifty for five thousand. Y'all had the opportunity to look this over.
Yeah, always. I've, I've looked at all these. They all look good. I've got Lime Barker making motions to approve all four.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Looks like we got a little bit on that one, David. I love it.
We can herd the crickets.
There you go. Uh, number eight-four from Commissioner Wilson, considering approved the request of the Hampton Oaks subdivision for a variance of the road in Hampton Oaks located in Precinct Four. Hampton Oaks will consist of one short road with a cul-de-sac at the end. The subdivision will consist of eighteen to nineteen lots. With the variance requested is that the base be reduced from twenty-four feet to twenty-two feet uh, in width evidently, and asphalt reduced from twenty-two feet to twenty feet in width. So we have that clarification.
Motion approved, second.
A motion from Greg, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, eight-five, Commissioner Wilson has, uh, considered and approved Nicole Boudreaux, appointment to Liberty County EST number one as an extra board member. Qualifications of Nicole Boudreaux are an experienced firefighter, paramedic. Reappointments to EST one also include Steve Mitchum, Jane McDowell, and Chris Dumont. Uh, there any discussion? I got one.
That's what we've taken a look at. The statute does not allow or doesn't provide for us appointing alternates. Good idea, but it's just.
It is, yeah. Yeah.
And, uh, if we don't have a statute saying we can do it.
I'm going to approve three real appointments.
Yes. And is that going to be in fact, effective as of January one?
That'll be effective January one, I guess, probably wouldn't normally they.
Yes, yeah, January one is.
This last one, or that?
Matthew?
Yes.
Okay, you're saying that as this extra board member, which could be an alternate, that we, uh, we can't go ahead and support that today?
That's correct. Yes, without the statute saying that, uh, or authorizing the county to appoint an alternate, we, we just can't do it.
Okay, so it's not in the statute, right?
That's correct. Probably a good amendment.
Really would be, yeah. I mean, uh, she can still go to the meetings.
Absolutely.
Yes, yeah.
For what, Jake?
I said she can still attend the meetings and, and be versed on everything that's going on.
Right.
I mean, I'd love to appoint her. It, uh, just.
I'll let them know.
Yeah, I believe. And Bruce made the second. Yeah, alright. Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-six from Ms. Soliday. Well, let's see. See, Melinda, it's, uh, considering approve the final step in requesting the FEMA ISA agreement. This document is required for access to our historical flood data that FEMA has on file. Since we're right in the middle of our study and our plan, I would like to see what the old history does say.
Exactly, and, and this is in preparation still for our, uh, special disaster recovery plan. Which I'm wired to begin hopefully in the next month or so.
By the way, on our, that study and plan, to my understanding, the LIDAR has been completed for all areas. So we are moving right along. Uh, once we, the LIDAR is all plugged in, uh, with the engineering firm that we've hired, it, uh, I believe we have about a two-year period that the actual engineering is gonna be taking place as far as. Uh, well, we get a whole new idea of what the TOCO is.
Exactly.
And all the benchmarks and quizzes, so, yeah. So it's a good set, something that's never been done. But we could get this done, okay?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve. Any further, uh, discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-seven, Ms. Soliday, considering approve awarding the RFQ contracts on homes using the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery from the General Land Office. The contract must be awarded before the abatement testing can begin. That's pretty self-explanatory. Melinda, do you have anything else you need to inform us about on this?
No, we, uh, we had five people show up for the walkers with the different homes, but we only had four bids come in. One of them had some conflicting, uh, dates. So they weren't able to, uh, bring it in.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, say aye? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, number eight-eight, uh, from Mr. C. Good morning, Mr. C. How about to Maggie's? They almost put it on U of H, didn't it?
Almost, maybe they tried.
And you'll notice we have our marine on today, so. Where's yours?
Harold, would you mind sending that over to my office?
Uh, it should be in the package.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, consider approve bid number twenty-four oh five for SS one, SS one H CRS two and CRS two Durapatch blend from Cleveland, Nashville. This for all precincts or just?
Yeah, for all precincts.
Okay.
Uh, when they've been it out, that's, uh, with those materials you just said, they, in the past, have always bid different levels, how many gallons they delivered, or how many were ordered. This time they just did one over five thousand. But we ordered less than five thousand, five bits, so we redid it, allowed them to do that. Because otherwise, they weren't gonna sell us this.
Yeah.
It'd be a lot higher price or happen to us, so we can, yeah, this'll fix that problem. Thank you, Michael. You have a burger?
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye?
This effective today?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Alrighty. Number eight-nine from Mr. C. Considering approve workers' compensation renewal at four-one-twenty-four with Texas split subdivisions. So April the first, we gotta get a new one, so it's not too many days away. If anything different about, uh, discussion?
Actually, the, the rates actually have gone down, I think six percent shows on there. Of course, we've added more people to payroll, so our pay is a little higher, but it brings good drops.
Yeah. That's good. I mean, as soon as cost of building materials for roads goes down, we'll feel a little bit better, right? Motion from Greg, second from Leon to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-ten on here, let's see, from Mr. C. Considering approve payment to Prism Electronics for fifteen thousand four hundred forty-five dollars thirty-five cents to Dayton NX repairs. It sounds like we're getting closer.
Yeah, this is in the package, because it was twenty pages, that's in your package if you want to see the detail. But these are people that picked up all the electronic equipment, cleaned it, decided what would work, not worse, and returned to us. Uh, Nick has, has it in his possession. Um, we got the insurance payment probably a month or so ago, so we had the money, which didn't fail. Second.
Motion from Leon, second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven, Mr. C, we're just wearing you out today, brother. Consider approve an order granting a discretionary exemption which local government code section two-six-two point zero-two-four A nine A for the purchase of equipment from an auction by a state licensed auctioneer. Good idea.
This is just in case it's over fifty thousand, uh, Bruce has something he wants to bid on with auction from right of Henderson.
Yeah. Motion from Leon, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, that motion carries, gentlemen. Number, well, uh, Mr. C, considering approve purchase of a fifty-five-hundred chassis RC for sixty-nine thousand seven hundred three dollars from Grapevine Dodge Chrysler Jeep through the buy board contract number seven-two-four badge-two-three for precinct one. Rich, find you a.
Yeah, I wanna make a patchwork out of it. Cheapest thing to find. Need two of them, but I can only afford one.
That is a ride. Fourth's pleasure. Motion from David, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, Mr. C, consider an approved extension of the contract with Allegiance Mobile Health to provide emergency ambulance services from four-one-twenty-four to three-thirty-one-twenty-five with the same terms and conditions. Got a couple of questions. Right now, allegiance covers the county, unincorporated areas of county. They also cover Cleveland in a contract, separate contract, and Dayton in a separate contract. I know that we, uh, talked to Sheriff about this, as far as dispatch is concerned, there are fourteen-minute response time, correct? I believe it's one, it's been pretty much that, no problem with that. My question is, in the contract, how many boxes do we have covering the county? I think it was five, or was it six?
I did review it, I think that sounds right.
Yeah.
Monty was normally being here, he's the manager over there.
Yeah. Yeah. So, how many boxes we have covered in the county?
I believe it's five.
I believe it's five, and there's one, one, uh, supervisor, case unit, okay.
And you got two for Cleveland and two for Dayton.
Yes, sir. Cleveland has one dedicated, one non-dedicated, and Dayton has one dedicated, one non-dedicated.
Those aren't included in the five that you know, sir.
But if you need the coverage, you can pull from Cleveland and from Dayton?
Yes, sir, we use it as a mutual aid, so, you know, they're, they're non-dedicated trucks have to mutilate, it's a kind of a, a vice versa mutilate. Same time, you know, we may call a truck for Polk County if it's at the end of the line, San Sino County. We mutilate, we're going to get the closest ETA within the contract bounds.
So you are covering San Sino County and Polk County as well?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Uh, just out of curiosity, when is the Dayton and Cleveland contracts up for consideration?
Judge, I don't know off the top of my head. I think Cleveland's already renewed. I think Dayton's about this year.
Do you have any anticipation on adding more boxes to Cleveland and Dayton? Okay. Reason I'm asking, I've, I've had people ask me, you know, what if? Yeah, I live at the edge of Dayton. I mean, I'm, I'm so close to falling off in the river, I may as well go ahead and call it, that my territory. But it, uh, see, I get picked up, and it's, since I'm in Dayton, falls under their contract. And then, what if something happens, my neighbor, but yet Dayton only has one box is dedicated, one box is non-dedicated. But that other box is non-dedicated, so I'm gonna have to call, so, and there's nobody there for, you know, the county, in a timely manner to get there, because you're coming from what location?
So they have a unit, you're talking about within the county? So we sit down with the county, and that's how we determine the staffing. So there's a truck in Tarkington, a truck in Long Grove, a truck in Arden, a truck in Westlake, and. Said Arden. Dayton and Cleveland, I think I missed someone. I know I was missing one somewhere, I forgot I'm on fire station.
Well, that question has come up, you know, it's like, what do you do then? Because that one box is gonna be on dispatch, not probably going to Dayton with somebody, me riding in it, maybe.
We try to move trucks around, so three-twenty-one is right there close to the Dayton, so a lot of times they'll be able to mutilate over into that area. Westlake, Mitchell Lake, depending on where they fall, fall. You know, as the county goes, we'll see, also if other trucks are available. You know, as the county goes level zero, also if other trucks are available in the areas, we bring trucks over to go backfill them and try to cover. Um, y'all don't hardly ever go level zero. Very few times that y'all run out of trucks counting.
Okay. That's my only consideration at this point. Is with the population expanding as it is now. And more people living in the unincorporated areas as it is now. Uh, what are we gonna do for the future? As far as coverage is concerned. Yeah, you're gonna have more people moving into the municipalities, okay? So that might be something you need to work on this year. I don't, I don't have a problem. Renew this contract. It's just for the future. Because people are gonna ask you those questions. But they're gonna ask me first, that I have to ask you, okay? So it uh, probably in the near future, Sheriff, we're gonna all sit down together and work on a plan that uh. It'd be cohesive at least, and then.
We'll have great discussions and look at the whole plan we bring off that.
Well, y'all always been good about that.
Yes, sir.
I mean, especially while we had the question about response times. Y'all jumped right on top of that, got it taken care of, so. Yeah, I'm satisfied with the service. Just now that we have ninety-nine open. Uh, then we see what's happening there on the west side. Of the river, you know, it's it's gonna continue, anyway.
How long is the contract for?
A year.
Make a motion to approve, David.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion?
Thank you, sir.
Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen, considering approve the district attorney's office to have access to the editing tools for the district attorney's webpage. The county website. It allows restricted access for needed changes and upgrades to their webpage only. Anna? I got it right this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, all right. You have a. Again, this one uh, was requested. Thank you.
And Ms. Bergman apologizes for not being here to the board. She's at the retired fire chief's field.
This is the same thing that was on last time except in wording.
It was requested that put what we wanted to change in writing.
Make a motion to approve, too.
Got a motion and from Bruce, second Greg to approve. Any further discussion?
Jay?
Yes, sir.
I've not received any of the writings that the district attorneys have submitted. Uh, it wasn't in the pocket. And apparently we just received this morning, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this point in time, I'm gonna have to say nay because I haven't been able to view the verbiage. Uh, of what they uh. What they're indicating to us, because we're just now receiving it. And I I don't have the abilities to look at it.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second standing. That is further discussion from Commissioner Wilson. We will call for a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Has a nay from Commissioner Wilson. Uh, let's see, number fifteen. You're back. Next time we'll get them all ganged up in one spot.
Well, I was working from home, so I was getting them to the deepest, that's what I could.
Uh, let's see, number fifteen, considering approve a variance request for Colling Ridge Development. For Santa Fe section sixteen. Attached is LJ A. Engineering's letter of no objection. You have any? Other things you want to discuss about it, Melinda?
Um, this is on one minor collector. They want a seventy-foot right-of-way, um, two eleven-foot lanes instead of the twelve-foot. And one major collector, seventy-foot right-of-way with two eleven-foot lanes. And on the yellow brick road, they want filling setbacks at twenty-five instead of fifty.
And LJ A. has.
And LJ A. has no objections.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye? Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number sixteen. Consider and approve a Colling Ridge Development. For Santa Fe section sixteen, construction plans. Final drainage uh, plan and final plat. For your approval, attached in the packet is LJ Engineering's letter of recommendation. It's self-explanatory.
Pretty much. Uh, this is eighteen hundred and forty-three lots and fifty-six reserves. Single-family units. Um, this section allows for residential and non-residential.
How many lots, Melinda?
Eighteen hundred and forty-three and fifty-six reserves.
Make a motion to approve.
Yes, ma'am. I have a bunch of maps. It's been sitting on my desk for months and months and months. I mean, I appreciate you guys approving them, but they're not filing them. Um, they need.
Usually get some filed right over.
They've been sitting there forever.
Okay.
We we aren't getting them, so, I mean, it's fine to approval, but if they're not filing them, it's kind of pointless, so. We need to make sure to file them and I'm. Time right here. So, I'm sorry, we need to interrupt. Bruce, you said you have made a motion?
Mm-hmm. Got a second from Greg. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nays. Uh, we have one abstaining uh, from David, so, okay.
Commissioner Wilson, I'll bring the MyLars to your office.
Thank you.
So fifteen and sixteen worked. Uh, David did have seven. We got this. We're on seventeen, correct? Number seventeen, Mr. C, come on back up, Harold. Considering approve additional change order request for project twenty-three-twelve. Construction of a metal supply shed. For precinct one due to the rising cost of building materials in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars uh, with applicable taxes.
Yeah, I need to make a clarification on this. This came in last minute Thursday. And trying to get it to DD on time, I didn't pre-read it. It says, uh, due to rising cost, building materials. That stands on a quote. Uh, this is only good for thirty days, is what it actually says. This is actual for electrical work. But it's a change order.
And not for precinct one, it's for the Harcale building.
Right. Even though it is in precinct one.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye? Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Nope, nope, nope. You don't, don't be jumping the gun like that. So executive session, okay. I do need a motion to uh, first retire and take a session. Motion from Bruce, second from David. All in favor say aye? And it is nine forty-three AM. And we are now in executive session.